Right, good evening everybody and welcome to this evening's council meeting on Monday 6th of October at 7.15. Apologies that we're a little bit late starting, obviously the planning highways and everything for this. I won't go through fire drills again, I think most people had it the first time around. We'll get into apologies for absence, which we have apologies from councillor Westby and council meeting on the 3rd of this evening. And other than that, I think we're all here. I would however, councillor Barrows, welcome to your first up for town council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have declarations of interest. Do any members have any interest to declare?
7A.
7A, thank you. That's a punitary interest, you'll leave the room, thank you. And I will say, as I did in the last meeting, that I will declare an interest, a personal, not punitary, interest in item 6.
And the same for councillor Estelle.
Next we have item 4, public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate at this point? No? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting held on the 11th of August, EGM and the 1st and 8th of September for acceptance and approval. Any amendments or councillor Bertram?
I've just got a couple of points. Reference 11th of August. Obviously the clerk added a statement read out by councillor Westby and myself, but only a summary about what the clerk said. Actually she read out a statement as well. So a couple of questions is why hadn't the clerk's statement been included? And for the interest in transparency, should it be included?
17 minutes, thoughts on that? So which page do I know?
It's just not in, it's not in, it's not in there. There's a statement read out by-
There's a chairman's statement.
Yeah.
Your statement.
And then there's just a summary, which actually the clerk actually wrote out a full statement.
And the minutes are meant to be a record of decisions. But as you've got some other statements, I think they probably ought to be included. So we'll include that in these minutes. That will now be included in the next six minutes.
Just on the 1st of September, meeting minutes, obviously the apologies of absences missed, which is fine. But should the names be included because they weren't presented for night? Is that okay to do so?
The minutes on the 1st of-
No, apologies of absences. That wasn't-
On the 1st of September.
That was missed, so just for clarity.
The minutes entirety was missed.
So out of clarity, should that be documented in the minutes because that wasn't presented on the evening?
I think the purpose of having the apologies for absence will be so it's quite clear who was present for any decisions that were made. So I think in hindsight, probably whilst it wasn't, they weren't given at the meeting, it is probably sensible to include them on the agenda. And it is quite clear that they were missed. So it's the minutes that are your record of the meeting. So those apologies were obviously given at the meeting whilst they weren't on, even though they weren't on the agenda.
I've got a couple of points just to recap on. Obviously just briefly, my proposal at the last meeting of councillor Dale, depositing hasn't been documented, just an observation.
Which meeting?
On the 1st of the 9th.
On the 1st?
Yeah.
So on the 1st. So that was councillor Dale?
When I proposed that councillor Dale stood in, that's not been documented. And lastly, for the 1st of the 9th, obviously I know there's a debate, but public participation is not a true reflection. Because I felt that standing orders TV wasn't followed. Again, that's just sort of-
I'm not going to mince the public participation now, okay? Councillor May.
Yeah, I just like it, I would like it minted that I think of my apologies to the clerk on the 1st-
Can I stop please? We've got mics, please can we use them? I'm sure people at the back can't hear. I barely heard what councillor Bertram said. So we've got mics, we've paid to have them, please can we use them? Sorry Peter, but it's not you.
No, it's fine, I think we do have them.
Obviously not, but now it's interference.
They might be carrying.
But now it's interference.
I'll speak up.
Thanks Peter.
I'd just like it minted that I gave my apologies to the clerk for both the 1st and 8th of September, I would like that when you said.
Councillor Bertram?
Lastly, for the minutes for the 8th of September, it is documented that the request for Christmas market was put on tonight's agenda, and that's not on tonight's agenda.
Right.
Thank you.
Subject to the politics, which obviously Sarah's taken note of, are we happy to approve the minutes? My other proposal, councillor Dusser, second of by councillor J Taylor, and all in favour please. It is carried. Councillor, when are you extending? Next we have item 6, Breckland car park proposal, if not where we just left off. Does anyone have any further questions? Does anyone want to kick start this debate? Councillor Adams.
We've been kicking this car park, Barrows, around for a bit now, and yet we still haven't got any costs or indications in particular. So how much is costing to run the car park? I think we've got a cost as the initial purchase, but that seems to be it. So how can we make a decision on something where we know nothing about it? Almost.
Do you want me to respond to that? We'd like you to respond to that. So we have provided costs of running the car parks to the clerk, that was back in April. And we set out what the costs were, Breckland councils to run the car parks, that might be given to another entity that runs the car parks. But we set out what that cost was to the clerk at that point in time. I'm happy to go back over what those costs are.
Can you just do a recap? I know, sorry, but we've got some members that are here for this meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. So this is based on the 23-24 year, the total cost of running all three car parks, public car parks by Breckland council and Asra, which is £186,500 basis is £35,553. That was the amount that it cost us to run the car parks. It's done on a pro rata basis, we don't do unit cost accounting. So we've taken the cost of running all the car parks and split it down per RATA of the number of car parks, based on Asra, of those overhead costs. The only cost which is specific per car park is the business rate costs. And out of that £35,553, the business rates cost was £10,155. The rest relates to capital sinking funds, repairs and maintenance, staffing costs, winter works, sorting etc. And any services such as electricity, drainage, water, anything like that on the car parks as well. So that was provided through to the town council back in April.
Councillor Adams.
So how much profit do you make running those car parks? Around?
We don't, we don't make a profit on the car parks and we're not allowed to make profits on car parks. So any, any local authorities that do operate car park charging in their car parks, there's certain things that you can spend any profit on or surplus. And they're quite restricted, but as a council, we do not charge for any of our car parks. So at the moment, the figures that Ralph has just given are, like I said, we don't do individual car park costing. So it's the entire car parks that we have across the district and we've divvied them up, so they are average sort of costs. But we don't make, we don't make any profit because we don't charge anything for people to, to use those car parks. When we looked into this about 18 months ago, as the district council to look to put charging on car parks. The remit that we were looking under was to just recover our costs. So all the works, what we were doing was to put charging on to car parks, which just covered our costs, which across the 30 odd car parks across the five market towns of Breckland is just shy of half a million pounds. And that's what we were looking to recover, was just our, our costs not to make any, any surplus.
So did you make a loss on the money?
Yes.
We do, because they cost-
You can do very much.
But it's that amount. So that's the amount, that's the amount that costs us to run the car parks with no income coming in.
So excuse me here, but if we're looking at taking on these car parks, we're not going to make any profit, we're going to make a loss. What's the point in us purchasing?
So the offer to the towns is, with local government reform round the corner. We, we were partway through a process of looking to implement charges in car parks. And it was coming up to a year ago that we were going out into all the market towns, having a consultation with residents, businesses, town councils, all various other community groups who use the car parks and who benefit from the car parks. And we were looking into how we could implement a charging model of all of our car parks. At the start of this year, a government came, were registering interests for local government reform, devolution. And that is part of a process what Norfolk and Suffolk are now currently working their way through. Local government reform is going to mean that we start to join ourselves up with neighbouring local authorities. So you may have seen in the press that for Breckland, we've gone for a three unit model, which will see there be three authorities over, over Norfolk. And it would look to Breckland, no longer existing as Breckland as a council, and we would look to join with Kings Lynn and West Norfolk. Kings Lynn and West Norfolk currently charge for their car parks, as does all of the other local authorities in, in Norfolk. And the risk is that Breckland car parks are currently not charged. If another authority comes, comes along, the, the chances of those charging mechanisms coming in will be likely to be very high. And for those charges will likely be harmonised with the current local authorities. So you will notice if you go to Wyndham, Deist, Downmarket, you will be charging, or you'll be charged quite a handsome fee for parking in those car parks. The charges we were looking at would be quite, quite humble compared to some other local authorities. At this moment in time, we've got a window where we can come to the town councils with a genuine offer. If you would like them as part of your control, not the wider local authority control, you can then decide whether you charge and how much you charge. There was a small window of opportunity before local government reform takes place, where that can happen. So it was a genuine offer from us to you guys to essentially pick up where we, where we were taken off in whether or not you would like to take on those car parks. And it would be your choice as the town council, whether you choose to implement charging or choose to keep them at no cost to the end user. That would be a choice that you as the town council would be left to make.
Oh, councillor Bertram, you've had your hand up. It's been covered. I'll note councillor Estelle first, then councillor Barrows, then councillor Middlebrook.
So it's, it's widely known that there will be a figure offered to the new unitary council from central government as a bonus for forming their new council. So I have a couple of questions. Would you agree though, that any merger would also absorb the debt that those councils have? And that it's possible the money handed down from central government won't wipe out the debts of those older councils? Because if we look at Norfolk County Council, I think it's 800 million there is, there in debt. So obviously that 800 million is going to need to come from somewhere. So that new unitary council will get a handout from central government, yes. But it is likely it won't cover all of the debts of whatever combinations of councils we see come from Norfolk, be it one, two or three. So would you envisage, envisage that Attleborough is going to somehow be miraculously really special? And that new unitary council will allow our residents to continue parking for free?
I would love to say, yes, Attleborough is really special and it would, and it would dodge that bullet. But we don't live in that, in that world, I'm afraid. So no, it, it won't be dodging that bullet.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Barrows?
Two things. One, you said the parking charges in Wyndham were very expensive, they're not. Oh, they're quite regularly. They're very cheap. So that's another, another point. And the improvisation of all the devolution and stuff, at the moment, the government hasn't even passed it to the top level. So why we're bothering at this stage to start worrying about things with car parks, you know, I've read the mine paper and it says-
They therefore couldn't put an exorbitant, because that means they would make a lot of profit, but they're not allowed to.
Yeah, if, if it's, if your fee is that much, then you know, the argument would be, are, you know, is anybody going to park on that car park and pay those fees? You know, we're currently today-
There's a means to cover our debts, is the thing.
So I think what councillor Middlebrook's trying to ask is, would the unitary authority have the same rules as the district authority in that reclaiming of charges? Because if it does, and it's cost recovery, the cost is the cost regardless?
Yes. Yeah, so, so it's set down in the Local Government Act. So every, you know, local authority that's called by the Local Government Act, which would be any unitary council, district council, county council, would be exactly the same. As Sarah says, you can reinvest the surplus in, and I think the term is, environmental improvements in your locality. Now, you have to read into what you think the Local Government Act means by the environmental improvements. And possibly some local authorities around the country have used some surplus which they've taken off car parks to invest in environmental improvements. But that is the very narrow requirement you can do. So you can't take that money from a surplus on car parks and offset it specifically on a debt to run another completely different surplus.
Two more very short questions. Out of the five towns, have any of them agreed or already said no to you that don't want to take over?
So this conversation started at the start of the year and it's been going up and down depending on, there's been movements in, in councillors in those spaces over the course of the last few months. The reason why you've got five options in front of you is because we've listened really hard to all of the five market towns and all of the concerns and the feedback. And we went to get the legal advice on these, these five options, because they were kind of the thoughts and feelings of the towns and, and what it was that their, that their members were asking. None of them have outright said no. Ralph and I are going to all the town councils again over the next sort of couple of weeks, when they're having this same discussion as what you guys are. And it will be up to the members on the evenings in those town councils to decide.
Very, very last point, I'll listen, is that you said Breckland's proposal was for three, three, three authorities joining together. Did that include Norwich City or not?
No.
No?
No, ours didn't.
I'm going to take councillor Dale.
Councillor Barrows, I apologise for being so pedantic, but you said you had investigated and they hadn't put up the prices, which to me means they were already charging them. Is that right?
Wyndham, we've seen South Norfolk charge, but not very much.
Yeah, no, I thought you said you'd done some, I thought you said you'd done some research in other areas and they hadn't put up their prices.
No, they hadn't.
Which meant they were charging anyway.
No, they weren't, they weren't. What they've done, what I meant, should have said, was they haven't changed anything, not fully up.
Councillor Estelle?
So councillor, and obviously I understand the concept that councils aren't allowed to profit surplus too much on their car parks. But they could theoretically choose to put a management company and subcontract those car parks out. So they could put it out to tender, the highest bidder could come back and say like £35 grand for Attleborough's car park. And then that wouldn't take the council itself over into profit, but that company then could charge what they wanted. Would that theoretically be a principle that could apply?
It could apply because they are not governed by the Local Authority Act, like what Ralph has suggested. And that is why when the, the costs which were sent over to clerks, it was sent over to all the clerks earlier on in the year. Where Ralph and the team were really clear, they are our costs based on how, how we do things. If you guys decide to take on the car parks, for example, and run them yourselves, you will be able to work out how much is, how much manpower you need if you want to charge, if you don't want to charge. Equally, some town councils have alluded to getting an on board a management company and they would literally sub that out. But you would probably find yourself paying more if you was to go to that vicinity than what you would do if you was to come to one which doesn't have a management company taking, taking on that, that role.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks for that, Sarah. I've just got one, a quick question. Well, you mentioned the 30 car parks in Breckland cost about £500,000 a year. Our costs obviously around Attleborough is the three main car parks. And is that, is that just going to be £33,550 per year?
So that is our, that is our costs for running them. So obviously we, when we do things, we don't have a contract to come in and just give us a quote, a line in your car parks. They'll do the 30 car parks. So the, the costs, what Ralph said around the business rates, that, that we know is a cost that you will have. But the other ones, depending if you were to take them on, how you then went to run them yourself, you may find that, you may find a quote cheaper for some of those. You may find that you have to pay a little bit more, but that's the price that we pay en masse. And we've just divvied it, divided it around amongst the car parks of the towns.
Just clarify, that's the estimated cost of Breckland.
That, that we pay, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you members have any further comments or questions? No. Well, we have the five options presented to us. As Sarah's alluded to, these have come as a direct response from the market towns themselves. And of course, this wasn't the original offer that Breckland was making, and careful considerations were made. Of the offers that have been presented to us, do you members have a preference? Councillor Zellin?
I still have a preference that we purchase Greensware.
So is that-
It's a major asset within the town.
So options one to four are all free hold offers. So free hold is obviously your preference. Two of those come with, well, one is no charging permitted, one is subject, charging subject to review. And then obviously the third option is that charging could be allowed. Then we have charging, charging would, not would, would be allowed. We then have option four, which is that a free hold option where charging would be allowed. And a separate agreement for the payment of an annual committed sum for the town for five years on an annual basis. And then option five is leasehold, which obviously you've said that is not your preference. So option four is your preference.
Yeah, because I, I believe that we should try to give it for free, but if we had to charge, we would need that as a stipulation.
Is that a proposal?
I would like to propose it.
Is there a second to that proposal please? Councillor May. Can I have a show of hands, all in favour of that proposal? And can I have a show of hands for all against? And was there any abstentions? No. So that was six, in favour, seven against?
Can we do that again?
Can we have, sorry, can we have hands up all in favour please?
Point of order.
Or seven against?
Should the Breckland councils be voting on this?
It's a punitary interest.
Not punitary interest. I'm allowed to vote on council tax, I pay council tax as a user of the car park, I'm allowed to vote on council tax. No, I'm just exploring.
And in these circumstances where it is seven, seven, I will lose my cast and vote in favour of the proposal.
So we just agreed to five then?
Well, we'd already had that principal agreement as a council of the options presented. We've, we've agreed to go with option four as our package, which is the free hold transfer at market value. A separate agreement for the payment of an annual commitment sum to the town council for five years. Sarah, Ralph, thank you so much for coming. I was going to prove that, that was quite a lengthy debate. You don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting, if you'd like to leave this party, you can go.
Quick question, I'm sorry, Sarah's a friend of mine, that's a good question. So you said the, say the car park made a profit.
Sorry, can you check this outside? Because we've not suspended standing orders.
Thank you, thanks for everything.
Next on the agenda then this evening, we have item seven. Don't go to your old councillor Barrows. Don't go to your old councillor Fraser. Uh, to authorise or table payments for acceptance and approval. Do we have any comments? None? Mine have a?
Um, obviously, um, last, if you, if I may say, you mentioned about the Chambers Cafe not going through the, um, Atwood Handcuffs accounts. Obviously they're on these lines this time round. Is that correct? Because they're still going through the accounts.
They continue to change it, they're going to have to, because you've obviously got the money, haven't you?
If, if I may, Sarah, I can add some clarity to this. Yeah, and the town council have been completely reimbursed everything up to date and are no longer holding any funds for the chambers. So after this meeting, there won't be any invoices coming forward from the chambers.
So yeah, so this is just historic from previous and from moving forwards, they won't be.
Can I have a proposal, please, for payments? Council Dalton, seconded by councillor Jay Taylor, all in favour? Uh, any against? Any abstentions?
All abstentions.
No, sorry, can we have show of hands? Can we have clear hands, please, like meaningful? So all in favour, all in favour of the payments?
Six, seven in favour.
And all against, please? Hands up in the air where we can see them, no? And abstaining?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And Fraser left.
And Fraser left.
The numbers right now?
Yeah.
Council Fraser, would you like to come back? Next we have, uh, agreement of the direct debit. This is for acceptance and approval. Any comments?
On the direct debit, the Barclay card is showing some purchases. Um, they're obviously not direct debits. Uh, I think off the top of my head, I mean, I've got, I've got figures in front of me, I can look them up. There's something like eight purchases on the Barclay card on the direct debit account.
So they're obviously made monthly from your, on your Barclay card.
Why are we on the direct debit? That's what I'm asking.
Because they're a regular monthly payment.
They're not regular monthly payments. That's the first time I've seen them on the accounts.
We could defer this item and get clarification before it's approved by members if they feel more comfortable with that.
Would you?
Yep. Next we have, uh, to receive income for acceptance and approval. Can I have a proposal, second please? Council Dalton, seconded by councillor Barrows, a show of hands, please? I think that's unanimous, very much. Uh, next we have the income expenditure September twenty twenty-five. This is for information. Does everyone have any questions? No. Uh, next is to approve the cost to fit the Vono kitchen of two thousand one hundred pounds for consideration and installation. Um, as members may be aware, those that have been here for a little while, those that are new and might not, the kitchen for the Vono building was purchased some months ago and has been sat at the Vono building awaiting installation. And the quote provided is by one of our approved contractors on our approved contractor list. Uh, hence the wrong quote being sought, so it's just whether or not members have been able to approve this. I will add a caveat that at the moment, there is a functioning kitchen, but it's not desirable, one would say, and also, um, until the kitchen is moved, Atwood House won't have their kitchen facilities back. Because that will be going where the existing kitchen is. Councillor De Souza?
How much proposal?
Councillor?
Sorry, I just wanted to make a point on this. We seem to be spending a lot of money on this Vono building. And yet, I think the income from, from it this month was thirty-seven pounds? Is that sustainable?
It, it would have been far more than that.
Well, according to the, the accounts, it says thirty-seven pounds on it.
I know that, but I, I feel that it's maybe not been, had the invoices because the bookings this month.
So the accounts are not correct then?
I'm not saying they're not correct, maybe their invoices haven't been paid. What I'm saying is the monthly turnover from that asset exceeds that because of the amount of usage that it receives.
Well, I, I can't understand that because I, obviously, either that's correct or it's not, and it's not correct. So.
Well, the, the income, the income will be noted as it, as it's received. So that's the, the income that's been, that's what I'm saying.
It's a timing issue on the, on the account system. You can only input it when you've got it, I'm assuming.
Well, we can only look at the figures in front of us and obviously they're incorrect.
They're probably not incorrect, they're just not, the timing hasn't enabled that information to be available for this particular meeting. You probably need to look at it over a longer period of time, so if you look at it next month, you might find that you have a higher income and hardly any expenditure because it's balancing itself out.
Thank you. Councillor Dalton?
Uh, months and months and, well, yeah, months ago, we reviewed all of the assets of the town and we said which ones needed improving. This is one of the ones that needed improving.
Are you seconding councillor Dale's proposal?
I was going to say.
Uh, sorry, councillor De Souza, sorry.
Does the Vale Building provide food and things like that?
Well, to be fair, it would be at the highest discretion in the same way that if someone hires the town hall, we have kitchen facilities available. If someone will spend to hire the Vono builder, they'll have the kitchen facilities available. We have a proposal that's been seconded. I would like to move to a vote, please. All in favour?
Your hand up?
Yeah, this one is, look, we've got it up high.
We have all hands except from councillor Adams and my manager. Uh, any against? Any abstentions? Councillor Melon, councillor Adams. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have, um, the ratification of the cost of the urinals pipe work at the Vono of a thousand pounds. Uh, I think that, uh, this is something that Sharon has already had done with, obviously her discretionary spending with chairman, so it's just looking at ratification of that payment.
If you get a building to have function to it, so.
So, means must. Can I have a proposal, please? I'll take councillor Middlebrook and councillor Taylor and all in favour, and I think that was unanimous. It was, thank you. And lastly on the payments, to approve the cost of a two-tier groundwater risk assessment for the new cemetery land.
I presume what we did earlier is now proposing to this, this full meeting that we approve it and go.
And is that proposal councillor Middlebrook? Yes, seconded by councillor Dalton, a show of hands, please. That is also unanimous, thank you everybody. Uh, next we have councillors' reports, town, district and county councillors, to give a brief report on any relevant information. Do any councillors have any reports they'd like to report? No, I will say I, um, I didn't want to dominate the meeting with my district council report. And so I did provide it in writing to Sharon in advance of the meeting and to include meeting papers, so I hope she'll be there now.
Mine's available as well now.
Um, as a town councillor, um, I think the, the main parts of, uh, any meetings that I've been to have been around the neighbourhood plan, I think we've had, um, two steering group meetings recently, um, but otherwise nothing to report. Nobody else. Um, next is item nine, which is the clerk's report, which was included in our meeting papers. Uh, that is available online for anyone with members of the public that would like to read it. And then we have item ten, which is the Benjamin, Benjamin Foundation quarterly report for information. Um, this is for information only. Again, it is in the meeting papers if anyone would like to read it.
Just on the Vono building, can I just say that the, uh, not the Vono building, in a sense, for the Benjamin Foundations? Or can I just say that the backyard will be done in the near future, the, um, slabs have been donated and the company that are going to lay them are donating their time to lay it. So that'll be at no cost to the council, but I have managed to secure the fact the same companies donate slabs, that's going to do the work.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the report that's been provided? No? I'm making up some time for that car park and that, aren't we? Um, next is item eleven, to update the progress of CCTV for the town hall open spaces, including the skate park for information. Um, there wasn't anything in the meeting pack for item eleven. Uh, and I haven't been provided that information, so unfortunately I, I think that item is going to have to be deferred. Um, and the same for item twelve, I've got no information and no reports given, um, on the meeting. Um, or the Atwood SME community business awards, so unfortunately I think that's not going to be covered as well. Uh, next on the agenda, we have item thirteen, which is Blackform Road, bringing to sign the TP one for the land transfer for consideration and resolution. Councillor Middlebrook?
Right, following the issue of the first plan, which I, I comment on, I did meet with Megan Free. We walked the site and she reported back to Breckland, um, a revised plan was issued, um, together with an annotated plan saying which bits they had changed, which bits they could and couldn't change, and gave reasons for it. Although the plan still looks very disjointed, um, and still could have been drawn a little more accurate, I'm more than happy to support this plan. However, I would like to make sure that this council knows that when we take over this land, there are three areas of encroachment.
Yeah.
Um, in each case, squatters' rights, the ten-year or twelve-year rule may have already happened. Um, but if we ask Breckland to do it, we would delay the process, which I don't think we want to do. But we just need to be aware, there are three areas, and I can highlight them to be put on a plan for future record, of where these are. Similarly, with the two transfers, or there are three separate transfers here. Um, and they are referred to in the TP one, so they are the actual land we're getting, which is, this is like a discretionary plan, so we all know where it is. The actual plans, what we're getting, you know, are the land registry plans. So that, that being the case, there are an area of footpath where, according to the title, we will own the footpath, but it's highway land, so I don't think there's a problem there, but there is discrepancy if you look at the plan. Um, there are areas of missing land on here, so we will be maintaining land that we don't actually own. For example, right in the middle, where is it this side? There's a triangle, which is why we have the TV up here, so there's a tri, very thin triangle here that isn't showing the titles that Breckland have, which is why they can't give it to us, totally unsustainable. But we need to know we will be maintaining or placing something possibly on those, those areas. Um, the railings, there are certain railings already in situ, and I asked the clerk to find out from Breckland who owns those. Breckland's response was, it will be ours. Um, which in certain cases it cannot be because the title plan doesn't go as far as those railings. So I would ask the title search is done of maybe a couple of the properties to find out where the T marks are, so that we know whether we own them or not. I have asked whether there was a twenty-year or ten-year community sum from the developer when this was done. Because if it's ten years, it's been spent. If it's twenty years, there may be some in the residual fund that could come back to us potentially. Um, before we take it on, there are broken fences, a butt in the highway. In fact, there's sections that are literally laying on the floor. Um, and again, I asked Megan if she can have these repaired or pass it on. So if we take them, either we take them knowing we've got an instant maintenance responsibility to get things fixed, or we get an assurance from Breckland that at some stage when their people can, you know, their maintenance are about, that they do fix them.
The, the only concern that I'd have with that is that if Breckland council were to spend money on improving that area, it's, it could come out of that S one O six allocation. Um, because that is known as obviously being allocated for the maintenance and upkeep of that area. So whereas if we were to wait until it was in our ownership, obviously we will be getting that money.
But the money we're getting is for the provision of the play, play and everything.
No, 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 it'd be used for anything, as long as it's the enhancement or improvement to that open space.
So that's the seventy-four thousand?
Yes, so, so we could use that.
So we don't have to spend it all on equipment?
Oh, no, 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 not.
You can sit in the bank.
But we've got to, we've got to provide a cost to Breckland, so we can just say, oh, we're not going to do any equipment. Oh, yes, we're going to do one springy jigging. We've put rest on the bank to maintain.
No, they'd want a, a developed plan. So if in that plan he said it's going to include these improvements to the fencing, this improvement to footways, this improvement to, you know, an element of play or something else, or even if it was landscaping or tree planting, as long as we've cost.
I mean, if the council gives it, personally, I, I think the fencing should at least be corrected. But, um, those are the points that I have observed from the plan. I'm happy for the TP one and the plan to be accepted, but making the council aware of those points.
Thank you so much for your diligence, councillor Dale.
I'd just like to thank councillor Huber for taking us around the other day and showing all these things that I was not aware of. And when you've got somebody that knows what they're talking about, gosh, it makes a difference, but there were areas that, I know what you're talking about now, but I wouldn't have known what you're talking about if you hadn't, I hadn't gone out with you. So thank you very much for that. It makes it really clear. Um, your knowledge was really well spent, yeah. Thank you.
So councillor Middlebrook, um, would you be happy to propose agreement to sign the TP one?
Yes.
And land, land transfer plan, a second to that proposal, please. I've got councillor Dale, all in favour? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, item fifteen, appointment of a substitute attendee for the Atwood Development Partnership Board.
Oh, there's one in the middle of that, fourteen.
Oh, sorry, land, land north of Norwich Road, you're right, thank you so much. Uh, agreement to sign the TP one and land transfer, uh, for the land north of Norwich Road. Councillor Middlebrook?
Um, this is very large parcel of land, so therefore the exact boundary, um, through the majority of the scheme will come out at a fee, whatever it is. The only concerns I have is access to this here piece of land. Because at the moment, although you can't see it, at the pointy end, there is a one point two metre strip that is owned by somebody. I would suspect that's highway land. But it would be worth checking. And the access, this end is denoted as a private road. Can we have an assurance that we can have access out of that private road? Otherwise, we've got a landlocked piece of land.
I believe those assurances have already been sought. Uh, councillor S Taylor?
We can access it through the cemetery as well. So we can access it through our own land if need be, if that helps with that.
Yeah, it just, if, if it was there, this is probably where you would naturally come in.
We can access it through, through, if we have any.
Okay, but if for ease of access, not having to come through the cemetery with, um, machinery and things like, it would be worth trying to find out or get some confirmation of the access.
There was, there was some negotiations some time ago with the Hill Group, the current land owner, uh, for vehicular access for maintenance, whatever ground staff, that wide range. So I'm aware that they've been had. I know that choices were given. I don't know if they've been written right in.
Okay.
I would say.
It would be worth asking the solicitor to go through the, the wording of the document, um, just to check that's in there.
Okay. So is that something that you would want in advance of any agreements received?
On, on the basis we can access it through our own land, through the cemetery.
You're still happy to?
I'm still happy to go ahead, but bringing, um, diggers, tractors, lorries, um, whatever to maintain that through the cemetery.
And to landscape it in the first place?
Yes, it's probably not the best option.
Okay. Do I have a proposal? Councillor Dalton, do I have a second then? Councillor Allen, a show of hands, please? And I think that's unanimous as well. Thank you. Uh, next is the appointment of a substitute attendee for the Atwood Development Partnership Board. Any takers?
I'll be happy to do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Which one of you would like to second? Councillor Dale, and all in favour. That's also unanimous. And next we have item 16, consider a residence proposal to the mayor suggesting online question and answers forum for town council matters. Sharon did send out a lengthy email about this, as everyone had the opportunity to digest it.
I don't understand the mechanics of it. Oh, thank you.
Which one made, you know, suspended standard orders, so I know that Mr Hamilton was the one that suggested this, I'm happy to propose, can I have a second? I'll take Jacob, and a show of hands please to second. Everyone, yeah. Mr Hamilton, would you like to?
Sorry, what was the question?
So we've got an item.
You just found completely off track, I was taking to sale outside, so we didn't go and hold on to that the minute.
So we've got an item this evening for members to consider the proposal that you made to the mayor suggesting a question and and answers forum, would you like to send?
A public forum that is set by the town council but has a forum, simple questions to save everybody around this table time.
They defer that.
So we don't have the public digging at each other, ripping into each other, we don't have councillors fighting with each other, it's simple. Whatever questions people put forward, just one of you, one night, just go on there, I don't know, Mr Reynolds, have your answer, you know. Mr Westby, Mr Middle, anybody, have their answer, just give a give an answer to a question. I mean, the question that I did actually want to ask Sarah earlier, it did relate to these car parks, was yes, I I quite understand that maybe we're going to take the car park on. My question to Sarah was outside, which you were probably wanting to hear, was they said that you cannot make money from those car parks. My question was, we have a lot of charities, we have Christmas lights, always looking for funding, we have the chambers, we have god knows how many other charities looking for money. If if we made money off that car park, could that money be given to those charities through our council? That I didn't really get an answer to, that is a discussion for all of you lot, that to me kind of makes sense that you do take a car park on. Yes, but you make money on it, but that money is given back to the community of Abra to fund the needs of people in this town. Not shelved out to Breckland, because it's a cash grab. It's quite simple, and this is the sort of question I would ask on the forum. If that forum is set outside the town council to have questions like this put to them, surely councillors could just answer these same questions.
Thank you, I'll take councillor.
Yeah, just a quick question, Richard, would you like this online or in person?
Whatever way the council want to do it, I don't really care, if you put it online, there's enough Facebook shit goes on, as we all know, right? And I'm done with it, I am completely done with it, I'm done with the group I run, I'm done with all of it, because that is not achieving what I want to achieve. What I want to achieve is people around the table to sit and talk, not a town to be divided. So to me, the easiest way is the town council itself, that I'm glad to see that everybody is different sides of the table tonight, brilliant. Because no one's divided, before it was like the red coast and the blue coast, you know? That is what we want to see as a town, so for me, if our town council set up a forum and people posted their questions, but please answer them, not we'll get back to you, you've got 14 people that can quite simply answer a question. Just sort it out amongst yourselves.
Councillor, I will take your point, but I would just like to say.
I want my point once.
No, I mean, I'll take, I'll take your comment, I will, I will, I will take your comment. But before we get that far, what I would like to suggest is perhaps a open workshop where members of the public can feed in and councillors can feed into what this might look like. Because I don't, I know Sharon sent out an email about it, and she's obviously gave it some thought, but I think actually, if it's going to work and it's going to be effective, I think that actually, it's going to need a bit more thought put into it than what we've, than what we've had. And also members of the public that might want to engage with it.
Well, my point was actually only going to be, it would need more thought, because although, yes, questions could come in, and and I get the concept, but no individual councillor can speak on behalf of council. So no, if you have a question coming in.
Every councillor tonight has spoke, you've had different opinions on.
And so we should.
Exactly, but it should be the same.
But we wouldn't be able to answer on behalf of council in that forum, because we're not allowed, so it would need delegation.
It's more of a personal answer to, I'll tell you how it brought it to me, and I know people picked up about it. Councillor Adams made a comment on a social media post, but he answered a question. And that was the first time I've heard a question answered of anybody in the council.
Yeah, and he's allowed to answer a question, in a personal capacity.
But me as me as member of the public found that fantastic, that somebody would actually take the counter bidding and say, I tell you what, I've answered the question.
Well, yes, and sometimes other members do, but I just.
I don't think it's a bad thing, I do not think it's a bad thing.
I don't think it's bad for him, but I just wanted, I didn't want anyone to leave this room under the illusion that anyone sat around this table can speak on behalf of council.
No, no.
So we wouldn't be able to answer that question, it would need to be a delegated person.
Thank you, and I don't know the mechanics of this, what we can do. Can we have a temporary working group to devise some sort of mechanism to have a public forum? Because I don't think we're going to do it tonight, are we, we're not going to come up with this, can we get together and see if we can do something?
Well, what what I was suggesting was basically a bit like a workshop, where we may be on a Saturday afternoon, have a drop in session where people can come in and give their ideas, and councillors can share their ideas as well, and just do it in like an afternoon. Rather than a formal process where we gather information and ideas, and then we can work through those concepts.
The only thing I'm saying there is that if I'm sitting in here with a resident answering a question on a Saturday afternoon, how is that information going to be pulled out to the rest of the town?
What I was suggesting is a workshop, not to answer those questions that were devised in the forum, that wouldn't be the forum itself. All that would do is serve as a a way of creating the forum, do you understand?
Yeah, and I think a forum can only really be used for, say, to propose a generalising. So that we can then bring these questions to a debate.
It's a similar question, to be fair, Jake, it's a similar question, like we've talked about several processes. Someone could have quite easily asked all of you that question. You haven't got to waste five minutes of the public participation talking about it, you could have actually, well, we've got an answer to that, we know where we're moving forward. Do you see what I mean? Participation in this room is limited, very limited.
I'll take councillor Reynolds first, and then, because I'm mindful of obviously councillors, but I will take your point.
I think I'd agree with you, that's setting something up, but also, Richard, the trouble is, I think a lot more councillors would have answered on that.
Yeah, no, I get it, but that's why I tried to distance it from that.
The amount of excuses I got, and my wife got brought here. Pictures of me all on base, but I'm going to dump it, this war, but it's back.
If I said to you, and I'll be honest with you now, my kids' life, they're not sat here, I set a page up whose stuff was taken down online, about two councillors, right? I won't name them, they're everything up. From that moment on, I have had nothing to do with that admin, I asked for admin because I've got a business to run, other people took that. There you go, exactly, like I've just said, I just said, when I say that in this conversation, I am quite happy to shut this page down, somebody else will open one. But all what I want, the council, right, listen, I'm quite happy to shut it down, not a problem. I've just asked the council to open their own forum for a discussion that we should have been having. So then my page was set up to have a discussion, yes, it has been out of hand, we've had.
Right, sorry, I'm just, I'm just going to say, excuse me, thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Hannah, I'll take your point, and then I'm going to bring it back to the table.
I'm not against the whole forum thing, it's just the one point of like being able to ask councillors' questions and not getting a response, isn't that the whole reason they have emails? That you can email every single councillor and get a response from them. I mean, you might not have a response.
I know, I know, we've got 13,000 this town. Unless you go onto the council website and get their email, and email them, but the amount of things I've heard where they're not responding to, maybe it's easier to have a simple forum.
But they could also not respond to the forum and then.
Right, thank you, thank you. Yes, yes, I think it needs investigation, I think that we should look at our diaries, we should set a date for a Saturday afternoon and invite members of the public to to feed in, give ideas, we'll give ideas. And then bring this back with maybe a succinct proposal on how we might be able to achieve this. Councillor to see.
Thank you, would it not, would it be better, and I'm asking the public here, to have.
Please don't.
Would it be better, I'll ask councillors, to have it in person or online, because like some councillors are saying, we can't answer on behalf of the council as individuals, so would it be better to do it in a room and the public can come and join us?
And I think if we have a workshop that members of the public and councillors can all attend and share their ideas, hopefully, members of the public can tell us that. Whether, and not just the the few that are here this evening, but actually hopefully the wider community might engage with this as well, and say, actually, you know.
Because they think we're the recent ones, nobody turned up.
But but I think, I think if we advertise a workshop and that we're actually seeking input and ideas in something, those ideas might not come in in person that day. But it might actually prompt some email responses as well that we can review, I'll take a closing comment please.
It was really good, I was speaking outside, and she mentioned the date of April, and they all up the power piles. I believe that people in this room have asked questions of the costings, profit, loss since April. They still haven't had the figures tonight, that shocked me, when I spoke to Sarah outside, I said, why have you still not got these figures? We have asked since April, but they were wishing it towards a clerk saying, well, she was told, namely, we've asked the questions and we are told we will get back to you, hence this site. You will get back to us, but you will get back to us in due course, I know you do it through the email system, but we've gone down the proper route where we have people in this room asking questions, and we haven't got answers. So, you know, I I can't come up with a better solution than how to, and if you can, fantastic, if all of you got my peers sat before me, can come up with a better solution to get this whole town back on board. And I think it's, like I said, this whole council is now split, one on one side of the table, brilliant, that's how the town should be, but how do you get them back on board?
Point taken, I don't.
I don't either.
Is everyone happy to to have a workshop and then bring the site in back, if anyone wants to make a decision on this this evening?
Happy to investigate this a lot more, but if it's on Facebook, I wouldn't be doing it, as you know.
I agree with you there.
You know, I don't.
Next we have public participation mark two, any members of the public? No, because I don't think we'll take the resolution. Yes.
Can we just go back and look at item 16, a moment, Gavin, you you took a vote on it, which was six in favour, seven against.
Six, no, seven, seven.
And then you revoked it, that's how it appeared.
No, it was because I miscounted, so I just asked the councillors that had voted originally for to put their hands up again, it wasn't a second vote, it was the original vote, but I I, when I added up, I haven't got the right number of councillors that I voted.
Because I was counting initially, and I counted six first time as well.
Right.
So be interested to see what comes out. And the other part of that is, was that motion to to take on all the car parks or just Queen Square? I wasn't necessarily sure what you meant, just Queen Square. Just Queen Square.
Anything else from the public?
Just a point, and I'm sure Mr Adams would want to apologise for this, and it was a mispronunciation by, and Richard will pass it on, I'm sure. When you referred to the darling, to the camp lady from Breckland, a lot of people find that offensive, and their business means that, they're wrong.
Sorry, I did what?
You referred to her as darling.
Who?
Sir, yeah, in the media, so I'm sure it's a slip of the tongue, but she did prickle, and I'm sure.
Actually saying that, if I did.
I'm sure you'd like to pass it on, thank you.
Right, on that, with that, we'll draw that session to a close, items for the next agenda, we have two deferred items, councillor Middlebrook.
I was approached by a resident Briar Post, I was asked to go and look at the culvert both ends. Because he and other residents there are, it's that time of year, they're getting concerned again. Looking the other side, which is the Hillsland, although we could only see a short area, you could see it is becoming overgrown. You can also see some topsoil piles, if we get torrential rain, but some of those topsoil piles may well slip. I mean, I've got no idea what the angler opposes, because I can't go on their land, but the potential is there for those ditches to become blocked, they're the right period owners. Can we do something before, not after, probably, just past them, can they go in, I don't know whether we can or can't. It's just that I was asked to bring it up, so whether it's something to debate at the next meeting, it was just something, it was the only place on here I felt I could ask.
Okay, councillor S Taylor.
I believe there is a cutback due for sometime later this month, that's being organised by the residents on Mill Lane, the flood group. I also, didn't the IDB say that they would be potentially taking responsibility for the piece that goes through the Hill Group? So that wouldn't be Hill Group, that would be the Internal Drainage Board, and Saturday, we did have quite a good update on how our MP is trying to push, he's now drafting a flood alliance bill that is seeing countrywide support from cross-pairee members up and down the country. Because flooding is something that is affecting everybody, every constituency, whether they're red, green, blue, pink, purple, whatever. And he has got cross-pairee support on that, and I believe we are trying to now organise another meeting with the landowners further upstream. Just as a last ditch, final attempt to get them on board and put in some flood mitigation in, and hopefully we can give an update on if and when that meeting, if they agree to it, will go ahead in the near future. Does that help?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's just, it was asked of me, so it's just.
Oh, no, no, I've got some contacts as well that I'll give you out of the meeting, I'll send you email turnings, contacts for like the leaders that are counting and stuff. With that, we'll draw the meeting to a close, thanks for coming, everybody, I'm sorry, Malcolm.
I just wanted to bring up, I've been asked by two, three residents about speeding in the town. I noticed that the, on Halfham Road, they've got the camera on, you know, the advisory thing. This exclusive gentleman in here, from a few meetings ago.
I've got an update on this, I can give it to you, okay, so I anticipate that that chap may or may not come this evening, so I did speak to Sharon today in advance of the meeting, I said to her, please tell me that you have processed that data from the SAM2, she said, yes, I have, but it's only for a couple of months, so I think it's like April to July or something we've got. She's managed to process that, it is now on the website, so that is available. One of the residents that lives on Halfham Road that's raised this, Sharon, a few times, they had contact for, so I said, can you please email him the data as well directly? Because you have his contact and you can do that, the other residents, hopefully they'll see it online, or if they come to meet, we can give them an update. And or if they make an inquiry, in the meantime, you can then respond to it with that information. She did tell me that the SAM2s that we've got are quite prehistoric, she had already had a hard time processing the data, and I think they'd had to go have some battery changes that was attached. And has suggested that perhaps she might bring an item to planning and highways to consider parish partnership match funding, to actually get some new ones that are better, that are Bluetooth, that you can download it. And hopefully have a far more effective, you know, system in place for reporting this.
Sorry, sorry, I'm tired. If you can contact the man, who we suspect we're both talking about, who contacted me.
Does his name begin with a J?
Yes, that's.
Hopefully you can see the email today.
He will, yes, he will, he's still, I'm asking the man, I'm fed up, can you do something?
Hopefully, hopefully he's had that email, and it is on the town council website, and Sharon is hopefully going to bring an item forward to improve the equipment.
Last point, I promise.
Yeah, I got excited, I thought we're going to get out of here, it's only going to take about an hour.
On the council website, there is still a single way. On the council website, there is still a single vacancy on one of the committees. Some of the other committees can have, you know, literally could have every group member, one of our new, or our new councillors would like to join, certainly one or two of those committees, can they be put on the agenda to vote on our new councillor joining?
Yes, of course. Right, thanks very much, everybody.